From the city building in Athens, Ohio, your local source for live city meetings. TGC 15 presents Athens City Council.
Good evening. Welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, April 25th. And boy, we've got some feedback. Tonight is Monday, April 25th, 2011. It's on or about 7:00 PM. This evening, City Council will be meeting in a special session, since it is not the first or the third Monday, and then a series of four committee meetings afterwards. We do have a quorum with all members of council present. Onto ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 3411 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title V, Public Utilities, Chapter 5.02, Garbage and Rubbish. Ordinance 3511 is an ordinance accepting a donation made by the Gowandee family of approximately five acres on Cardiff Lane to remain as undeveloped park land. Ordinance 3611 is an ordinance amending the 2011 appropriation ordinance. Ordinance 3911 is an ordinance determining to proceed with sidewalk construction on Mill Street as described in Resolution R 1011, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 4011 is an ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed $1 million of notes by the City of Athens, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying back, paying part of the cost of acquiring a new fire truck and related equipment, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 4111 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into contract with the Sutton Corporation to purchase a fire ladder truck, and declaring an emergency. Onto ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 4211 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Soil and Water Conservation District, and declaring an emergency. Member Gosny.
Thank you, Mr. President. Several weeks ago, we discussed this in committee, and we have an annual contract with the Soil and Water Conservation District for services they provide in the city. Our last year's budget, we allocated $12,000 for the contract. And after discussion in council, we discussed a possible $8,000 contract with them this year because of our financial situation. And so that's what we have as a proposal. And I'll let the mayor speak to this as well.
Do we need suspend rules on this?
No.
The payment is usually due the first of May, so...
Okay. And again, this is a reduction by... We went back and forth about reducing it by half to 6,000 from the 12. And then we decided three-quarters, because I know they've been taking hits from the county as well as their other funds. And they use this money pretty much to leverage other outside funding, if I understand correctly. And they do a service for us. So I would actually ask, if possible, there are suspend rules on this to make it go, or else you can wait to the next one. We have one more regular session.
From a...
No, we don't.
We don't?
No.
We don't have another regular session? Okay. I guess not. Oh, yeah, it's the 25th. I'm staring at the 18th, that's why. I should put that agenda away here. So please do suspend it if possible.
I have a feeling from a couple of council members that they wouldn't like us to suspend on this tonight.
Okay.
And so we'll continue it, and...
A quick question. Can we pay half a year? And can we split it into two payments? The second contingent on funding?
I feel like we've already reduced it to two-thirds of the request.
Right. But we did that before we kind of knew the budget that was coming out of Columbus, and how hard... I mean, do you understand? We're all very concerned, and we understand, you know, the Soil and Water Conservation is an important service. But I'm just, you know, I'm just wondering of the logistics of that.
Other comments?
Yeah, I actually have a question. Is this generally... The funds come from the general fund for this usually? Is that correct?
I agree where they do come from.
I can't recall.
What's it say here? They're coming from the 120. Yes, they are coming out of the general funds.
Are there any other comments? Onto ordinance 4311. An ordinance declaring certain vehicles no longer needed for municipal purposes. Member Nysel.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a listing in the ordinance 4311 of nine vehicles that will be... That the city will be disposing of. Some of them are from lands and building, public works, the police, recreation. And what we have allowed for is that we can dispose of them by donating to other government agencies or nonprofits, or by auction or sealed bids. So this would be the first reading for this.
If I could ask a quick question. Is the speed monitor that's up, is that the thing that we pass that flashes how fast we're going?
I assume that's a SAM.
It doesn't work anymore?
No, the new one. Oh.
No, this is the old one.
The old one, the very old one. You're talking about some of the SAM.
So we have a new one, and we're selling the old one. Is that it?
Yes. We're abandoning the old one, since it stopped working a while back.
Any other comments? Ordinance 4411 is an ordinance authorizing construction of the Carriage Hill Bridge Rehabilitation Project Number 261. Member Nysel.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a project for which we are requesting $180,000 from the unappropriated balance of the street... From the Street Rehab Fund 572. And this authorizes the Service Safety Director to spend up to $200,000. This is the project that will take place this summer. It's the replacement of the Carriage Hill Bridge. And the funds that the city is using for this project will contribute to the cost share of our other larger project, the Oxbow Bridge Rehabilitation.
Other comments? Ordinance 4511 is an ordinance amending ordinance 13409, authorizing preliminary engineering of the Richland South Project, Project Number 244. Again, member Nysel.
Thank you, Mr. President. The City Council in 2009 passed an ordinance, and that ordinance authorized seventeen... An appropriate $17,000 for the project. And we are needing $11,900 from the Street Rehab Fund, $5,100 from the Street Fund 220. And this is for the preliminary engineering of the Richland South Project. And that's a section of Richland Avenue that's below the roundabout and extends to the intersection of Route 50 and 33, commonly known as the South Y.
Or Pomeroy Road.
Or Pomeroy Road. Correct.
Other comments? Those are all the ordinances that are on tonight's special session. And the special session of City Council is now adjourned. We move on to the City Services Committee. Committee Chair Nancy Bane.
This evening, we're going to have a presentation from our city engineer, Andy Stone. Take it away. Oh, he's got paper. That's right. We'll put it on him, will ya?
You're not going to keep us to 15 minutes, are you?
I'm gonna do whatever you like, Mayor. I'm just looking at the number of slides, that's all.
We can share.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Andy Stone. I'm still the City Engineer and Director of Public Works. At least until after this presentation. Just joking. This is a presentation about three upcoming sewer initiatives. Next slide. The purpose is to familiarize council with these three initiatives, explain how they're related to one another, as well as how they're different, and then to kind of talk about the timeframe of general execution. Next slide. These are the three initiatives. The wastewater treatment plant, energy efficiency improvements, also known as the EEBCG, which is Energy Efficiency Block...
Community Grant?
Community Grant. And that's an ARA grant. We have money already allocated for that from the ARA funds, wastewater treatment plant general improvements, and the stormwater pollution prevention legislation, or just general stormwater pollution prevention. All three of these are initiatives that will go forward here over the coming months. And they all are somewhat related, and they're somewhat different. And I just want to kind of prep the groundwork for that going forward. This is the first of these three initiatives, are the energy efficiency improvements. This is a picture of our wastewater treatment plant, as it stands right now from the air. This is over off of East Park Drive. Slide. 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 I'm just gonna click it all up here. It's animated slide. 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 Okay. There you go. The first of these three initiatives is the EEBCG grant, which is a project that has to be constructed by July of 2012. For those of you who remember back in 2010, we applied for ARA funds. We took a project that we knew we had to do, which was upgrading the wastewater treatment plant, and tried to fit some of the aspects of that project into the criteria that was required to be competitive for this particular grant. The various things that we came up with specifically are the main buildings improvements. For those of you who haven't been down to the wastewater treatment plant main building, it's a 1960s-era, 1950s-era building. Very energy inefficient, single-pane windows, no insulation on the walls, the roofs leak, you know, whole boiler, gas boiler heating system. So primarily, a building upgrade to the building itself. Energy heat recovery heating and cooling system. We're gonna ditch our gas boiler that is there, and we are going to use what is similar to a geothermal system that you would use at your home, except capturing the latent heat from the wastewater, the wastewater effluent. Wastewater travels through the ground, sits at about 55 degrees. We can capture some of that heat and bring it in for both heating and cooling. And the heat recovery system is a big part of this. New roof for the building, exterior insulation, new lighting, both for the building itself, as well as energy-efficient site lighting, which is an LED lights, very similar to the ones we place around the roundabout at 682 and Richland Avenue. There are 17 of those around the wastewater treatment plant as it is now, not LEDs, but they're older, more energy-demanding lights, and it will be replacing those with these. And then lastly, putting in a backbone for a new SCADA system to control the plant. Once we go to the next project, which I'm gonna talk about, which is the wastewater treatment general improvements, that SCADA system is how we're going to operate this plant more energy efficiently. We thought we could front-load this and put the backbone in now as part of the energy efficiency project. And SCADA stands for Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition, and that's a fancy term for keeping track of what your plant is doing from a master control station and operating it, you know, train on, off blowers, pumps, et cetera, in a more efficient manner, so you can run the plant better. Slide. Here's the scope. As I mentioned, the second bullet there, cost of note, and these are rough numbers, the grant amount is not a rough number, that's very definitive, $362,000. We don't have design complete on the energy efficiency portion of this project yet. Some of these activities could get slid to the larger project, some could get slid to the smaller project, or to the front-end project. Of note, this is a reimbursement-type grant, so the city will have to front this money. And then, once it's completed prior to July of 2012, which is our requirement, we will apply for and receive that $362,000 back from ARA funds. The timeframe. Late May is when I would like to begin readings on this. And we've got a lot of work to do in between now and then, looking at how we're going to finance this. But just to give you a timeframe, that's when I would like to begin readings, so about a month from now, with the goal of not having to suspend. And then, the construction has to be complete by 2012, July 2012, to keep the grant. Slide. The second of two initiatives, or second of three initiatives, rather, that I wanted to talk about this evening is the wastewater treatment plant general improvements. There are a few items here about the wastewater treatment plant that I'd like to discuss, what we have existing right now, our flow and loading projections for the next several decades, the various alternatives that we've considered here over the last few months, moving forward on what it's gonna take to upgrade our plant and modernize it, the benefits of these various alternatives. And talk briefly about the potential rate impact. We're not gonna get way into the weeds tonight about numbers, because we're gonna have plenty of opportunities to do that here over the coming months. And certainly, that is what the debate will hinge on. And then what the next steps are on this particular project. Slide. All right, this is our existing plant. In very, very general terms, if I were to split the plant into two sides, you have the wet side, which is the side on the left, and you have the dry side, or the solid side, which is the side on the right. In the last 20 years, we've put a considerable amount of money and effort into the dry side of the plant. I would say we are as good or better than most wastewater treatment plants out there across Ohio and the nation on the way that we manage and handle our sludge, as well as the condition of those facilities. And the sludge is the portion of the wastewater that settles out through the process, and then we dispose of it via land application after it's treated, and after we get rid of the biochemical oxygen demand, which is the true pollutant from that sludge. So that's the right side of the plant that looks in pretty good shape. You see some new concrete there in that picture. Done a lot of work in the last couple of years. The left side of the plant, that's the wet side. This is the effluent itself. This is the liquid portion, the portion that we then go treat and put back into the Hocking River. There are a number of processes at the top part of the left side. You have your primary clarifiers, which was in 1952, when this plant was first built. That was the only thing we did, which was we let it sit there for a little while. We allowed some solids to settle out, and then we sent it on to the river. Since then, we've added other treatment processes, specifically aeration, which is kind of in the center there, the long vertical tanks that you see. Secondary clarification, which are in the lower-left side. And those are the... That allows the effluent to be clarified even further before we put it back into the river. And then chlorination, which is a requirement for us to chlorinate, to kill germs, as well as then remove that chlorine. And we have to do that for half the year before we put it back into the Hocking River. You don't have to do that during the winter months, because the expectation is that recreation really isn't happening, and the potential for disease spreading is not that high. Also, the very, very large tank on the left-hand side is our equalization basin, which helps us deal with wet weather. So all of the stuff on this left side of the plant is pretty old, and in pretty bad shape, and needs a lot of work. The largest issue... Well, I'll talk about it as we go forward, and we'll talk about what our base project is. Next slide. As we went forward, we looked at potential growth in the City of Athens over the next 20 years. These are the three criteria. Go back one slide, Tom. I failed to mention... We didn't rehearse beforehand.
Just keep talking.
Okay. Just press the arrow back, back arrow. There you go. All right, the very bottom, design. Our capacity in our plant, 4.8 million gallons a day, that's what it's designed to treat on average flow, and then peaking out at 8.1 million gallons a day. That's when we get very wet weather, and we're shoving a lot of sewage through this plant. That's what we can treat. Next slide. For the next 20 years, we consider three growth scenarios. Little growth, which is the City of Athens growing at a population rate of 0.5% per year for the next 20 years. And this bears out with what has happened over the last 30 years, to include the most recent census, as well as what the county has talked about as far as potential growth. And that's just natural tendency for people to move to the City of Athens and expand and demand the capacity of this area. Of note, our peak hourly flow 20 years from now, we will not be able to handle our peak hourly flow on this growth model. However, we will be able to deal with our daily average flow. And in all situations, we will, although we're starting to lose our capacity as we approach those higher numbers. The second scenario we considered was medium growth. And for lack of any other assumptions to make, we took a third of University Estates, where you see it now, and based on their original master plan, and assuming it was built out. And then 50% of the section that we've discussed as a potential other sewer add to the city. And that's... We talk about it here as the AA build-out, but it's specifically US 50 out to County Road 19, up to 56, and back into the city, which is an area of the city. And there's a slide here in a minute, and I'll show you that. And then the last one, significant growth. This is 75% of the University Estates being built out, based on their master plan, which is already in the city. And then 100% build-out of a sewer system of some sort, between here and County Road 19. Slide. All right, this is what I just said in graphics. And the section to the southwest there is the area that was considered in the recent county plan for potential sewer expansion to the southwest. University Estates is shown to the northeast there, and some crosshatching. There are two other areas that right now are on the radar as potential growth areas. On the east side of the city, one is the one that this body has discussed annexing here recently, north of Hope Drive. And then the other one is the former Columbia Gas property. So you can see that there. We looked at what likely development would be in all of these areas, and that's what we used to forecast flow. And remember, we're looking 20 years in the future. Slide. All right, this is a complicated slide, but what this is really getting at is that peak flows are what is gonna drive the selection of our alternatives. As you saw in that first one, our current design can handle our average daily flow, but it's those peak loads, when we get heavy rain events, when there's high usage, where we're starting to run into trouble with our current plant on the wet side being able to handle sewage going through the plant. Right now, we're fine. 20 years from now, not so much. As you go down, the ones that are noted, the influent pumping, the final clarification, those are two right now that we know we are too small to be able to handle 20 years from now. So that's something we need to address in this project at a minimum to include the items that EPA has already told us we need to address with our plant, which are maintenance issues as opposed to capacity issues. And I'll hit that in a minute. Slide. All right, there were six alternatives that we evaluated for each flow. So effectively, there are 18 different alternatives that we evaluated moving forward. Alternative one, this is the minimum we have to do. This is what we looked at a number of years ago, about in 2009, when we were chasing stimulus money. We rapidly put together a... If you gotta do something to the wastewater treatment plant, and you gotta pull together a plan very quickly, what would you do? And we put together a plan. In the meantime, we've had EPA come down and visit us on a couple of occasions and tell us that our wastewater treatment plant smells, go figure, and that we have to do something about the odor. And there are processes that you can make odor go away. You can either contain it, or you can remove it from the process. And those are the different things we considered. Also, they've said that our front-end screening is not up to current standards. And so what we send through the plant, in a lot of cases, are some solids that really shouldn't make it to that point in the process. That is to say, the final clarifiers, or even the effluent, that make it out. And that's because our front-end screening just isn't what modern standards would support. So that's alternative one. Alternative two is all of that, as well as a new influent pumping station. And that's to deal with those peak loads we talked about in 20 years. Alternative 1B is to all of that and primary clarifiers. Our primary clarifiers, as I mentioned, built 1952, one of the oldest components in the plant, tremendously maintenance-intensive, and need a significant amount of repair, even if we don't do a replacement. Next slide. I'm sorry. Go back. Sorry. I didn't get all the way through that. Secondary clarifiers, that's just adding on to the larger project. 1D, primary and secondary. And then alternative 1E, the whole shooting match, new primaries, new secondaries, and influent pumping station. Of note, at the very bottom there is something about septic receiving, and I'll talk about that in a minute. All of our alternatives considered a septic-receiving component. Slide. Alternative one, this is just pretty much the baseline, what we have to do. Refurbishing our influent pumping station, repairing our primaries, repairing our secondaries, repairing our aeration tanks. Those are all concrete repairs. Replacing our orine with an ultraviolet disinfection, and then a primary treatment building, and that's that front-end screening that I was talking about. Next slide. This is 1A. Adds a little bit of money, but we will put a new influent pumping station. You can see the location we've identified there. Next slide. 1B, add new primary clarifiers. Demoing the primaries where they currently sit and putting round ones. Nobody builds square clarifiers anymore. That's outdated technology, because you make the water too turbulent as you have to go through it. A round clarifier allows less flights, and allows a slower process by which you scrape the sludge off the bottom and the grease off the top of the wastewater as it's sitting there settling. Slide. Alternative 1C, new secondary clarifiers, because we've identified that's one that right now, 20 years from now, we're not gonna be able to push the peak flow through, based on our current permit. Next slide. New primary and new secondaries. And the UV, in this case, because of space requirements, the UV treatment goes down to the bottom center. UV is a process by which we can remove, and this was in our original plan in 2009, remove chlorine as a disinfectant, when we have to disinfect that one half of the year, and instead do it with ultraviolet light. It's a safety thing, as much, because chlorine gas is pretty cheap. It's just also pretty deadly, and it's a pain in the butt to deal with. Next slide. And then this is the whole shooting match, as I mentioned before. Slide. All right, septic receiving. We had a meeting here when our consultants were down last week talking about all these various alternatives with area septic haulers. We had it lunchtime, and we got some pizza. We called it the septic luncheon. It was a great event. And what we did is we picked their brains, the folks that drive around southeast Ohio and empty people's septic tanks, both at businesses and at individual homes. Major problem in Athens County, lots of failing septic systems. Cost of septic removal is prohibitive in a lot of cases, and so people don't do it, and they end up polluting the groundwater. Why is that our problem, you say, here in the City of Athens? Well, it's really not. However, the EPA is in such dire need of having receiving stations in places that septic haulers can legally dump sewage, that they will make it free for us. That is to say, if we borrow money from EPA to do this project through the Water Pollution Control Loan Fund, they will lower our interest rate for whatever... So that the net result is whatever the cost of the septic-receiving station is over the life of the loan ends up being zero. And the reason is that the nearest places to here are Lancaster and Chillicothe. And so septic haulers are driving, in a lot of cases, over 100 miles round trip to move septic. And they're paying about 4.5 cents a gallon. So that adds up to a lot of money for us, potentially. This is a great revenue stream, number one, for our treatment plant, since we're treating all this stuff anyway. Number two, it's an opportunity for us to help our rural neighbors that can't afford a sewer system. Some of the drawbacks of a septic-receiving station is operations and maintenance is one more thing to fix and to maintain. We would like to think that the revenue would more than offset that. Increased solids loading to plant, septic is a lot stronger wastewater. And then lastly, potential for shock loads. And that is to say, something toxic per se, or something that can upset the balance of the plant, and there are ways to work that out by doing dosage, also by doing a very, very defined process by which we'll take samples, and then keep a record of those samples, and then should we ever have a problem, go back on the hauler. And all the haulers in Athens County right now have to register with the Health Department, which we would use the same registration, and they have to be bonded for that. So it is in their interest not to give us something that would upset the balance, the biological balance of our plant. That is something that is a concern, though. Slide. All right, this is the big scary slide. I'll let you look at this. This meeting was not supposed to be about money. This was supposed to be a qualitative meeting. It's in here, it was in the presentation. Obviously, we'll talk more about it as we go forward. Next slide. Recommended, alternative 1E. This is what the consultants are recommending. This is what I'm recommending. The reason for that, this is the best odor control potential. We will eliminate the sludge pits with this particular alternative, which is one of the largest odor sources. We already know that the front-end screening is one of the other ones, as well as the primary clarifiers. Those are our three big odor producers. Reduce maintenance out of alternative 1E.[1759.02] Reduce maintenance out of alternative one E. Improve process efficiency with those circulars, that's something that will be much better at treating our sewage with. Prepare for any and all growth, just wrote that J. And then lastly, prepare with space to expand aeration if EPA requires new treatment removal. One of the things we told our consultants very early on is, we don't want to design based on what the EPA might do as far as stiffening our permit in the future. But we know, when you look at northern Ohio, they've gotten stiffer and stiffer when it comes to the requirement to remove phosphorus and ammonia from the waste stream. Right now, we don't have to do it, we discharge to the Hocking, it's just not part of our requirement. If we ever have to do so in the future, we're going to have to add extra aeration capacity, and alternative one E will give us space, because we'll be demoing those clarifiers in order to be able to do that. But one of the things, we were very clear with our consultants, where we don't want to build on the maybe and borrow money now for something that EPA may never tell us we have to do. Slide. Here's a couple pictures of a couple of the various things that I talked about as far as the benefits. You can see in the upper left, that's a picture of the top of the primary clarifiers. Those flights break pretty regularly, and you've got to get in there and fix those. Very yummy situation. The grid screenings, the screenings and the grid dumpster, we go indoors, that's another significant sense of odor, source of odor. The effluent, what we're putting into the river now, secondaries would make a very clear effluent. While we're meeting permit, it would be even better. The sludge draw-off pits, and then the increased capacity. And then the big question there in the lower left-hand corner, what can we afford? Go to the next slide. Here's a quick comparison of Athens rates over the last 10 years. This is the average, our average monthly sewer bill for the city of Athens compared to Ohio, compared to nearby cities. Now, of note, nearby cities might not be the best comparison, it might be that we want to compare to Oxford, or Kent, or another one of those college towns to see what is a logical comparison. But right now, at least over the last 10 years, Athens has been lower than the state average, and really in the bottom third of sewer rates. So as we go forward, I'm not telling you, we could go ahead and raise rates and rake in all kinds of money, but we are lower than the state average. Slide. And this is some projections going out to 2035, based on what historical raises per year have been. You know, the proposed rate increase in order to do alternative one A works out to be 3% per year or less over the life of 20 years. And how we do that, whether we front-load it, whether we back-load it, whether we make it even across the board with rate increases in order to fund the debt to do this, is up to this body ultimately, and that's what we're going to be looking at very closely between the consultants in my office and the auditor's office and the Utilities and Committee. But if you look over the last few years, state average increases have been about 4.2% per year, and then our nearby cities have increased at about 3.9% per year. So if you were to go and project that out over the next 20, you see that we're still less than the average. But that said, it's something we have to decide what we can stomach here in the city. Slide. Next steps, we've got to do this financial analysis over the next months. I would like to get a decision about what we're going to do in order to stay on our timeline by the end of June. That's not to say an ordinance passed by the end of June, but a decision about what we think we can borrow, what we think we can do. The next step for this particular project will be appropriations for design. We have to apply for a loan, whether or not that's through the Water Pollution Control Loan Fund, or through a local bank, or through some combination of the two. There's that loan shopping that we would do. And then construction would take place in June of 2012 through December of 2014. Slide. All right, this is the third and final sewer initiative over the next couple of months, and this is semi-related and semi-not. Last year, Aaron Wolf from EPA Southeast Region, who's the surface water enforcement guy, came and told us we were getting ready to get classified an MS4. That is a municipal separate storm sewer system. It's a special designation that the EPA gives to cities over 7,000 that are in what's considered impaired watersheds. Up until now, we haven't had this designation, but we are supposed to get this designation soon, as soon as EPA and Ohio and Central Office can figure out whether we're impaired or not. And I think there's just been some shortfalls while the administration has changed. What this means for us is it implements a third National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, that's NPDES, permit for us to maintain. Right now, I maintain, and then what I'm graded by is two NPDES permits. One, our big one, is for the wastewater treatment plant, which is what we put back into the Hocking River. The second one is a much smaller one for the byproducts of water softening from our water treatment plant. Once this goes into effect, we will have a third permit that we will have to manage, which is for our stormwater. It's a lot more of a qualitative process than it is quantitative. It's very easy to look at our outfalls on the two plants and say, yeah, you're meeting your limit, no, you're not meeting your limit. Stormwater is a lot more qualitative. Are you having education programs? Are you doing enforcement actions to keep people's stormwater clean? Go ahead and go to the next slide, Tom. Okay. The requirements of our permit, and this is how EPA will grade us, or so I'm told when this goes into effect, we'll have to have legislation on the books preventing stormwater pollution. So that's something that this body will have to pass in order for us to be in compliance with EPA. We'll have to do public education and outreach, involvement, participation, look for illicit discharges and eliminating them. That is to say, people discharging stuff they shouldn't be into our stormwater. We have to monitor construction site runoff. We do to a greater or lesser extent right now anyway, and we'll just have to make that stiffer. Post-construction stormwater management, both in new development and also in redevelopment of existing area. And then lastly, pollution prevention and good housekeeping of our entire system. The way I would propose going forward with this legislation would be to stick it in Title V in our utilities code. We could do it as a standalone ordinance, but I think that with a little bit of stubby pencil work between me and the city planner, we can make it fit in our utilities code, and I think that it makes sense that it's there. We're already talking about sanitary sewers there, we might as well talk about stormwater and storm sewers there. We could do a standalone ordinance. I would like to administer it similar to the way we administer well hy protection right now, the similar program, and set up a team that we'll call the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Team, and do the same thing we do now, which is evaluate new developments, do education and outreach, you know, monitor what's going on in and around the city as far as stormwater. The costs I see for this, plan review, obviously, we'll be looking at more plans more closely. You know, a lot of that will be borne in-house, but it's time. Enforcement, monitoring, so that's just eyes on various areas as far as what people are doing with their stormwater. Any stormwater infrastructure improvements we want to do. We know that we have flooding problems around the city, we know right now we don't have a revenue stream for stormwater. We currently take stormwater improvements out of street funds and out of sewer funds, or sanitary sewer funds. We don't have a stormwater fund per se. So that would be a cost that this program would incur. And lastly, any incentive programs that we decide, that we come up with as a means by which we want to promote sustainability when it comes to stormwater in the city. Last slide. I see the cost being borne in this by a flat rate added on to sewer fees. Obviously, this body will have to decide. Initially, our thought is to assign it by zone, because that's something we can get right now and get our hands on. Eventually, we would like to switch to an impervious surface based on utility customers and what their impervious surface would be. Also, this body passed new TAP fees back in December of last year, and in that ordinance noted that stormwater, TAP fees would be adjusted in the future when we pass legislation with regards to pollution. And I would contend that we need to adjust our TAP fees as this goes forward to deal with new developments. Right now, our TAP fees for stormwater are just $1,000 per building, which is pretty fuzzy, I guess, and also pretty low. And lastly, creating an incentive program and TAP fee system for innovative methods of stormwater management, as well as perhaps an incentive program for homeowners who want to do retrofits. We know recently we've had a lot of love with Athens Soil and Water Conservation District, the rain gardens that we've put in a couple of locations, and perhaps there can be an incentive program worked into this to help both homeowners and existing commercial industrial properties retrofit and make themselves less polluting when it comes to stormwater. That's the extent of my presentation, outlining these three sewer initiatives over the next three months, and hoping for your questions.
Okay, so just to make sure everybody knows, we're going to have another meeting in two weeks for you to bring up any questions, because it's mind-boggling, right? But if you were going to summarize, what would you say is going on here in the wastewater treatment plant, the part, I mean, what are you doing generally? Just, because you have a lot of information.
Sure. If I were to summarize, we would be preparing our wastewater treatment plant for the next 40 years. Our wastewater treatment plant is 60 years old right now. We've done a lot of work on the dry side or the solid side, and it's in pretty good shape. We have it on the wet side. And if we're looking at a modern plant compared to our plant, if we want to stay in compliance with our-
I think, of course, you'll be removing the odor.
Right, right. And that's something that everyone thinks about and knows about.
And we've been promised many times that that was going to happen.
Sure.
But the only thing that's relatively innovative, because the rest is very standard wastewater treatment plant, is the UV, right?
Correct.
Okay, and that's the only maybe gamble?
I wouldn't say it's a gamble. The only thing that would cause it to be a gamble is if we start to have an issue where we have way too many solids, and we have difficulty settling out our solids. Right now, the way our sanitary sewage is, we don't have a lot of total suspended solids. That's when you get into problems with UV, because you just can't, you don't have enough time to settle out the solids, and then when you feed the wastewater through the UV, the light to disinfect it, there's too many solids, and it blocks the ability to kill those germs. And I don't see that as being a problem with ours, because our wastewater is pretty good in that regard.
And so, all right, so I'll just pass it around to everyone else, and then they can also develop what other questions they have and go, maybe do email if necessary.
Certainly.
And the only thing I would like to maybe note just slightly is, when they were doing their wastewater treatment plant, wastewater fees, they were talking about a mythical eight-gallon customer, and I'm not sure they necessarily fit our model, and that was the way they did it. And so I've asked several people to help us with that, because 3% may not be enough.
Right, I agree. One of the, when you look and we talk about the Athens sewer rates in that graph I showed you, this is a mythical 7,750-some gallons a month user. Most Athens users use around 5,000 gallons a month, you know, five to six. So, you know, Athens, perhaps we don't flush as much, we don't use as much water.
We're not so clean.
Yeah, we're not so clean, I don't know. But we don't use as much as the standard EPA number out there. One of the ways that we are going to look at that very closely is by looking and doing a statistical analysis by random number generation of various utility customers, and pull out what we think is a statistically significant sample, and say, okay, among this sample, what is the average use? And use that to figure out what the rates would actually need to be.
In the residential area.
In the residential areas, absolutely.
Okay. Anybody else? Chris?
Well, this kind of follows up. Your growth analysis, future growth analysis, this, one of the assumptions is that there's no water-saving requirements that are put upon. No. Right now, you have low-flow toilets and other things. I mean, it's making assumption that systems remain basically the same as they are now. Is that?
Correct. That's the case. However, the major, major impact to growth in our system is peak flows. And peak flows are driven by rain events. Unfortunately, I, all the, you know, as much sealing as I do, and it is an initiative of mine to seal up our sanitary sewers as well as I can to keep that rain out, it's a very difficult thing to do. And I think that over time, even if we had maximum growth, and everybody used low-flow toilets and low-flow showerheads and stuff, I think we would still see the peak flow problems because of just the nature of extended lines.
Thank you. Sheri, Kent?
Thank you, Mr. Stone, for your presentation, and it was very detailed, and there was a lot of information here to digest. A couple thoughts, I wanted to check in with you, is, do you know if there's much data out there regarding the potential money that could be gained from the septic-receiving plant? Is there much data out there for the communities that have taken this on?
There is. In our model that we're looking through right now, we set up a model for debt analysis, and I'm working closely with the auditor's office regarding, you know, whether or not the assumptions we made were accurate. We use revenue of $35,000 a year. Looking at the numbers that were given to us by the, just the attendees at our luncheon that we had last week, our septic luncheon, we think that the possibility of, that they will come, and we'll probably get to the point that we'll have to turn people away because, you know, the solids loading will be too much, and we'll have to say, we can take this much this week. But I think the revenue stream potential is pretty high, simply because there just isn't other, there aren't other places to take it. And EPA is getting more and more stringent about land application, and you know about that.
Which could potentially offset the cost to the taxpayer then, with the monthly bill?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Ratepayer. No tax dollars, ratepayer.
Yeah, it's a ratepayer, it's not a taxpayer.
Because the EPA Water Pollution Loan Fund?
You know, we could slice it and dice it however we saw fit. Perhaps we could take all the septic money and put it straight into debt payment, you know, as a boost-up to try to pay the debt faster. There's any number of ways that we can do. We just calculate it based on base revenue, and yes, it would increase revenue.
Okay, thank you.
Although, I do want to say that, you know, this effort of septic receiving is not, you know, Andy Stone coming up with ways to make money. That's a nice benefit to the city by doing it. But it's because, you know, EPA really would like us to do it, number one, and I think from, you know, from one of the only places that has a real capable wastewater treatment plant in the area, you know, there's a certain amount of regional responsibility.
Well, environmentally speaking, it makes sense to not have these haulers driving great distances.
Right, right. And they are, they're driving to Chillicothe if you're out in Lancaster.
Thank you.
So, I had, thank you for coming to speak to us tonight. I had a question on the septic receiving, and this isn't something that I'm sure there's an answer for right now, but just recently seeing Gasland and reading a little bit about hydraulic fracking, one of the things certain places are doing is trying to encourage, it takes millions of gallons of water for each one of those wells to be drilled, and one of the things they're trying to do to deal with the water is to put it through municipal sewage treatment plants in some places. And so I would want to know if we would, if we took the EPA's incentives on accepting the septic, if that would be an obligation we would have down the line to accept that type of material from them.
I can answer your question now, and it's no. We don't have that requirement. We can very, very clearly define what we can take and what we won't take. Right now, there's been interest in grease, that is to say, byproducts of cooking, and that's something that are, that, there are some plants that do, particularly on the dry side, that do anaerobic digestion, that are able to deal with that, and we simply aren't in large quantities, and so we're not going to accept grease. Haulers have to give a manifest to the Health Department by Ohio law, and I have copies of some of those manifests, if you are interested in them. They're very detailed. I mean, they have to say everywhere that they picked up from, and the gallons, and the time, and those manifests would be something we would keep on record as well. So it's not like just anybody comes. We wouldn't, in this program, we wouldn't, you couldn't like bring your RV and just pull up and dump your RV. This is, you would have to be a licensed hauler through the Health Department to use it.
That's a pretty picture.
Thanks, I wasn't sure you'd be able to answer that right now, but I appreciate it.
Anybody else? Kent?
Thank you. So in summary again, would you argue then it would be very negligent of us to do nothing if we were to say that we're not going to move forward on any of these initiatives?
We have no choice.
I would never call city council negligent, per se.
It's a good thing.
Obviously, you know, my job is to improve the infrastructure of Athens, and, you know, if anything, I think I've been accused of being a bit overeager to do that. And I would contend that this is important, but, you know, I'm just going to do the best I can to lay out what the costs are so that it's eyes wide open and we can make a proper decision. I believe it's the best thing for the city, for us to do this, and the best thing for the health of the Hocking River, the best thing for being able to maintain the sewage system over the next 30 years. However, you know, should we bear those costs? You know, I would say yes, but again, my mission is to improve the infrastructure, so naturally, I'm going to lean towards that. General Petraeus says we're going to win in Afghanistan, but that's his job, to win in Afghanistan, so.
What about the 500 prisoners that got loose today?
Thank you.
Sure.
So, any other questions? We have to do, Kent, we have to do at least 4 million.
Okay.
And that would be building up the lips on the square plants, I mean, you know, putting in like an enlargement that way, which, you know, think about outside, think about your driveway, or maybe it's not concrete, but mine is fairly new and it's already somewhat- your driveway, or maybe it's not concrete, but mine is fairly new and it's already somewhat, it's been affected by the weather, so that seam might be a problem. I mean, they could probably do it fairly well, but I think, you know, his proposal has the advantage. It's going to go further, but it's going to be better over the long haul.
No, and for any of us that spend time outside or are in that part of town, or whatever the way the wind's blowing as well, we're familiar with the needs and concerns of the plant, and it's a quality of life issue as well. What do we want to create for the future of Athens also, and the children that live here, and the people that reside here?
And is it, okay, so just to summarize, and even without the Albany area, or even UE going 50%, the middle one is, with I and I control, is a reasonable one, middle growth rate?
I think so. And certainly, we would be ready then for, you know, the unexpected, where perhaps it's not the Southwest, perhaps it's, you know, OU doubles in size, and they build more rooms, or, you know, who knows, who knows what other eventual activity, but we would be prepared for the growth. There are going to be less and less and less new treatment plants permitted. It's just the direction that the EPA is going, so their preference is to, rather than permit new plants, and permit packaged plants, smaller developments, and various things, just go and say, hey, there's a city there, you figure out how you can get into that sewage system, because that's what we're permitting.
Anybody else? Thank you.
I think Kathy had a question as well.
Kent?
Not a question, I was just going to make a comment to let everybody know that the auditor's office has been working on these numbers, and Ray Hazlitt, the deputy auditor, in particular, put together some information this afternoon, although I was told this was not going to be a money meeting, so I didn't think-
No, no, we were going to have it next week, or two weeks from now.
Yeah, and that's fine, and we can do that, but we do have them, and the only thing, since it was brought up about the rates, the rate increases, is just to warn you that the engineers' calculations weren't terribly off-base, but a little bit optimistic, and I think the main thing that they didn't really keep in mind is the increase in operating expenses over the years, which would have to come off of the revenue from the service charges, and that it looks to us like a 3% increase, you know, over time would be the minimum.
Yeah, that's what they use. They use 3% increase in operating expenses per year for that.
When you do-
Or perhaps it's too low.
Well, it looked like they dropped it off towards the end, and they went to two, and then one.
Okay, so we can do the money next time. But let's just, and thanks, Andy, and thanks, Kathy. I know Ray, I didn't know Ray was done with it, but I think that, you know, there's some interesting questions that have been raised, but I think you have the framework now that we're going to be proceeding on, because it's all still unknown, but, I was, and so, your random sample, you know, I'd like to see how it works.
Absolutely.
I've done stats a few times. Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Nobody else? No citizens? Yeah, Chris?
I've got one other question, and this brings up a point, I think that Paula Huron-Moseley made at our initial meeting with Strand, and that was whether or not we could, or they might be able to consider the possibility of, you know, maybe some solar units that might end up generating some electricity to help run, and that might help with our operation costs.
One of the, you know, both plants are very high electricity users, it's just the nature of what we do. At the water plant, it's pumps that pump water all over the city. At the wastewater plant, it's pumps, and it's also blowers, because the way we treat sewage is by adding oxygen to it. Blow oxygen to a tub. You know, if there's any places that we can save on that, we would do so. One of the locations that we thought would be viable would be this UV disinfection. It does demand more energy than chlorine disinfection does, because you're using electricity and ultraviolet light rather than gas, chlorine gas, to, but you only have to do it half a year, and you only have to do it in the summer months, so that's when it's sunny outside. So, that might be a viable place to apply some sort of solar array. And it'd be very, kind of locked down in one spot.
Anybody else? Is your flow equalization tank full?
It was. It was full.
I figured.
And we were shoving all 8.1 million gallons through the plant.
I can imagine. Next, we're going to planning and development.
Thanks, Andy.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Tonight, I just have one item on my, on the agenda, and it's something that was brought over from the Planning Commission, some recommendations to change our general business zone, our zoning code, concerning sweepstakes and internet cafe businesses. As many of you probably have read, there's a new phenomenon, and how new, but it hasn't hit Athens yet, about sweepstakes and internet cafes, which are, I guess you could say that they're pseudo gambling establishments. The law in Ohio is somewhat murky when it comes to certain types of gambling, and they have deemed that this isn't gambling, but it kind of looks like gambling, and so people are concerned about it. Other communities have had growing concerns about it. I know Gloucester has one, and they're, they, the people, many of the people who I've talked to just dislike it immensely. So, we wanted to address the impacts of that, potential impacts on neighborhoods and other businesses by looking at the zoning code. And the Planning Commission has recommended that we change 230407 by adding a new section, which would be 230407A13. And I included a copy for you to peruse. Basically, this was modeled after the adult entertainment zoning that was done a few years ago, because we found that we had no zoning concerning adult entertainment establishes, establishments. So, basically, what we're looking at is that sweepstake internet cafe businesses would be required to be 1,000 feet away from various religious worship, religious, other religious activities, any buildings, private, public schools, as defined in chapter 23.10. Boundary of any residential zoning district, a public park defined in chapter 23.10, any public library, or any other sweepstake internet cafe business. And that these businesses would be only allowed in B3 planned unit developments or M zones. So, we're trying to identify areas that are suitable for these sort of businesses within town. I'm not going to go through the whole thing, because a lot of it's just definitions and such.
You're going to clear it out yet?
Yeah, I will.
Realized there's a, there was a discussion about putting a mirror set of ordinances in the business section, I think it's total nine or 13.
Right, and I have those, too.
Okay, as long as you know that that's the other side for you guys to do.
Yeah. So, we need to have a public hearing on this, which Debbie will arrange 30 days from now. And is there any questions concerning this? This particular zoning code changes? Okay. The other part of it was, I wasn't 100% sure, since this didn't come out of the Planning Commission, but it was justified by the planner, whether this should go through the Planning and Development Committee Business Code Chapter. I don't, am I in charge of that?
You're putting a new legislation in, I imagine that requires planning.
Well, also, the planner has put forward, which is many more pages, and I didn't copy it to everybody, I will email it to people. So, I wasn't prepared to necessarily go into it as, tonight, as in much detail, but this would be looking at the business, you know, licensing them, charging them fees, some of the other nuts and bolts of having them operate in the city, and that would be changes and additions to the business code, which is chapter 11.
And that would be a companion?
It would be companion. I will email those out to people, so they can peruse that. It's about 10 pages. And, you know, the gist of it is to ensure the safe, you know, public safety and health, and to also ensure, you know, that these, I think, at one point, they have a fairly high impact on the community, from what I've heard from other communities that have had them, and looking at, you know, public safety and administration of these sort of things. So, I will get those to you. Any comments? So, yeah. So, we'll look for a public hearing. I don't have any miscellaneous. Any miscellaneous in planning?
I will mention that there's discussion on the Planning Commission level of, we still have to get the new signed ordinance legislation put together. I believe we're discussing, not so much a public hearing since the timing would be pretty far out there, but a, probably an evening Planning Commission meeting, as soon as we can get the time arranged and all the bits and pieces lined up. We also are looking at the cell tower legislation.
Wireless communication devices.
Wireless communication devices. So, we're working on various aspects of that stuff right now, just so you know.
Forward to see map.
Yes.
Did I also hear there might be a meeting regarding the armory this week? Are you aware of that?
Yes.
Wednesday, correct?
Wednesday, 6:30.
I think so, yes.
Okay.
Again, this is more discussion on where to go next with it, and really, the rest of it, for the most part, is to mothball it.
Okay.
Right?
Which means?
Stabilize it, so it doesn't get, so I'm mothmangling it there, no. So stabilize it so it doesn't deteriorate anymore. I think if you went to the first meeting, one of the discussions was that we shouldn't let it deteriorate any further. There was not consensus on what direction we wanted to go with it, but the fact is that it needs some maintenance. I know that, I know right now, I saw a requisition come past my desk about fixing the doors in the back. The back doors are rusting out. I know we need some flashing issues to have to be dealt with, compared to what the other ones were. There are a series of small things to make sure it does not lose ground while we decide what to do with it, or while we find the money to do it. And that's really the thing, it's just a coalescing. I know the contact person's Polo, but it's really not his job. He's not this, as a planner, he's not looking at building, one building, per se, but the fact is, there is a grassroots desire to have something done with it. The question is what, and then get the community involved in it. Because it's going to cost money if we decide to do any of it. So, I don't know the exact time of the meeting, but I know it's scheduled.
I think 6:30.
6:30? Wednesday, is it?
Wednesday.
Okay.
Yeah.
I believe so.
Yes. I looked at my email, and it's all not flashing before my eyes, so I'm sorry.
If you get a chance, we'll stick it on the website.
People could also call Paul Logue, a general email.
Maybe it's on-
Maybe on his website. City website. I'm not sure if it's on the city website.
We'll put it on if we get a chance.
Yes, please put it on.
We can get somebody to do that.
So, that's all I have for planning and development.
Finance and Personnel Uptown Benchits.
No, do I?
I know a little bit from staff meeting. Do you want to, okay.
Well, the auditor knows that we had donations for the park benches and beautification of town, and the money did not get appropriated for spending. The money is there, enhancement funds, and so.
It's about 9,100?
1,139.
Okay.
They did spend some money on benches last year, this is money that was still raised as donations towards benches and-
This was money basically raised Athens Uptown.
Yes.
Yes.
So, the idea is to put it back in place, so that we can continue either putting benches up or other, you know, fiddly bits with the benches. I don't think we ever got the grates we were talking about, too, did we? Okay.
Yeah, we're going to do the tree grates.
Mm-hmm, yeah, fences and grates around. Yeah.
That's a specific cost that we know we have, but I would like to also state that we have not, we'll be meeting again this week with the auditor, we might identify another additional need for an appropriate, that would be incorporating the appropriations ordinance that will come forward.
Maybe we'll have Chris Portman's-
My next.
Regular session is next week, I guess three, four, fifteen, sixteen.
My understanding from the planner, though, is if this were the only appropriation, then it's not, he's not in a big hurry. It's kind of a summertime thing, they're just thinking about getting ready to do or stuff.
That's all?
Yeah. That's easy.
So, we'll move on to community issues, and we have, most boldly, under our committee meeting, especially with the noise ordinance and proposed changes, and I'm going to ask Senator Gosny, who's going to pass the ball.
Okay. What you're saying, of course, is that we changed our policy last September in terms of the, how we address the noise ordinance. You remember, the discussion was that there's a high number of calls that we get, and we changed it. Of course, we have an initiative that's been put forward through the Student Senate somewhere about a month and a half ago, I think it was about a month and a half. Captain Pyle, now Chief Pyle, actually said that he was going to coach Student Senate to explain it, and then he had a further conversation with Student Senate members, and he asked for authorization if he could actually talk to them about tweaking what needs to be done on this, in terms of noise ordinance. As citizens, I said, go for it. This is, again, this is our new chief, and therefore, community-based. We have had some, several discussions, Alahu Gosney's been involved in it, John Calhoun, and I think other members of Student Senate from the- I don't know if you've got a draft of it in front of you or not. Did any of you get that? Okay.
I think everybody did.
Okay, so, these are some of the proposed changes. Essentially, there's odds and ends, you can see what the strikeouts are. Really, I didn't really want to get too much into the details. I figured this would be the first blush for you guys to do it. It's not as complex as a wastewater treatment plant. It's probably a little bit politically more charged than that, since it's quality of life issue, although I think the smell of a wastewater treatment plant probably is right up there. Some of the changes, of course, would be changing, if you notice, organizational liability. This changes a little bit of what, I think, we're talking about fraternity houses and group houses on that. Some of the other ones, of course, was to change the, a ticket system rather than a citation that provides a criminal aspect to it. Part of it also would be a waiving of that ticket if all the members of the organization or the party house actually signed off on it the first time. So, they'd get the first bite of the apple, I think is the term I've heard. Some of the other aspects would be, let's see, I forget them all right off the top of my head.
Reset period.
Oh, the reset period did change. I think Student Senate was talking about 30 days, we went to 90. I think at this point, it's 180, so we split the difference. The other one, what probably would be the change of the time, we made it consistently 12, 12 midnight for weekdays as well as weekends. Probably, because rather than have this shift back and forth, but also, if you look at the numbers that Chief Pyle had generated, there's very few officer-initiated calls were occurring between 10 and 12. Most of them were still complaint-based. He could actually give you the numbers better than I could. So, that's where we are. I really wanted to get this out to you guys, because you would be making changes. We can have more discussion with it, and I'll take questions at this point.
The changes to the violations and such, what sort of, I'm looking at it from an administrative point of view for the police, and how much extra bookkeeping and recordkeeping does this, does this guy require?
It would require some adaptation. Right now, the court does some of the recordkeeping as far as criminal citations, but the changes are not insurmountable, and when you look at it in totality and say, this is addressed, this addresses a real issue, and the real issue that this addresses is, is there is, at least in my opinion, a legitimate concern that playing the stereo too loud is a criminal violation immediately. And this sets up some level of warning system. So, the change would be to make it administrative violation for the first two violations, then move to criminal, if the person in violation or continues to violate. So, from my perspective, it's acceptable to take on a slight increase in work to track those things, and in my opinion, it would make us better enforcers to track those things a little more specifically.
And this would reset every, the beginning of every school year, or?
Because, you're, there, one thing that I was confused about is that there's the house, the address, which, you know, kind of, somebody calls up, or people are driving by, and it's, you know, 123 Maple. And then, next year, that house may still have a problem, but it's completely different people.
Correct.
Yes.
So, is it resetting at the first of the year?
Resetting every 180 days.
Every 180?
No, every 90 days, sorry. So, that'd be every three months.
Currently, it's every 180 days.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Under this proposal, we change every 90 days, which, and that really has nothing to do with beginning of a school year, in a school year, it's just 90 days from the last violation. There could be situations still where a person, say, is suddenly leasing a house for the summer, and then is moving to another residence in the fall. That's why this 90 days makes sense, because it kind of followed, would follow that person around on a quarter change, and possibly closer to the semester. Semester would be about four months, so 90 days makes more sense than 180 days. So, ninety days makes more sense than one hundred and eighty days. But it truly follows the violation around. And our citations are geared towards people, not houses, though that is one of the other concerns that was brought forward in our discussions. Are we talking about the house? Are we talking about the person? And in all cases, we're talking about the person, but it does become a confusing issue. I agree with you there. Which is why the whole warning system was built in, so that there can be some consistency in making sure that each person in a multi-residence house got the same warning that the person who received the citation. So, that's built into this proposal. And I think it's really smart. That came from a person in Student Senate. It was a suggestion, and I thought it was a really smart way. Helps us, again, in my estimation, to be better enforcers to track those kinds of warnings. And it also gives us a written document to show that everyone in the house received the warning. And there's some incentive for them to sign that citation and simply waive the fine. Doesn't waive the violation, just waives the fine.
It also gives communication within the members. You could have a situation where somebody takes off for the weekend in a household. The party assumes, they come back, not realizing that they've been cited. And next weekend, they have a party, and they get clobbered. And they say, "What happened here?" The assumption is that we always have perfect communication among roommates. And I'm sure everybody who's had roommates, sometimes it doesn't work out that way.
Could I follow up and ask? If you... I don't, first of all, have any problem with most of the recommendations, but I... Because they've been changed so many times. New police chief, new changes, fine. But is it not the case, Captain or Chief Pyle, that D depends on the officer who's driving the beat?
Sure.
I mean, so all of the talk is kind of dependent. So, there's no way that really it will... If a person isn't prone to enforce noise, it won't be enforced.
Well...
If they don't do noise, oh.
There's some truth to that, although there's some consistency right now with the policy shifts from September. The people who are in the position to enforce primarily evening shift, late evening shift, and midnight shift. I've had several, several talks and discussions with about the necessity to adopt this policy and enforce it. But... Well, to give you an idea, since September until early last week, statistically, we had only taken sixty-four on-view officer-initiated noise actions for the last seven months. But we have, in my opinion, a large voluntary compliance right now. And I think that the difference in noise at midnight on the weekends is remarkable. And it was almost immediately recognizable. When we started this in September, Halloween last year, when you drove down Mill Street and the Palmer Street area notoriously, and by reputation, the loudest place in town on Halloween outside of the downtown area, all you heard was crowd noise, because at midnight, the stereos were shut off. Voluntary compliance, which is what we were seeking. So, regardless of the actual enforcement, the threat of enforcement is there. And that's in large part what keeps us from having to take action in the first place. So, that's why I was pretty adamant, adamantly opposed to the initiative which takes away officer-initiated activities. This would not. It simply limits the officer hours in those per se timeframes. And that's specifically what the per se timeframe deals specifically with, is the ability for an officer to enforce, or at least threat to enforce, between those hours of currently ten and seven on the weekdays and midnight and seven on the weekends. So, again, statistically, in those sixty-four on-view initiated activities in the last seven months, only ten of them have occurred between ten PM and midnight. So, not a huge change to limit the officer's abilities that move it from ten to midnight. About twenty percent of all calls come between... Noise complaints come between seven AM and midnight. Eighty percent, roughly, eighty percent come after midnight, between midnight and, say, six AM. So, statistically speaking, it's not a drastic change.
So, continuing on, I was... A couple more questions. I don't like the "everybody has to sign" thing, but, you know, I'm sure that there's a reason for it. It just seems unnecessary. Because I remember students who were in apartment complex X that were thrown out because their roommates had a... You know, that kind of group punishment always seems to me to be a group recognition that somebody else made them noise, faux pas, whatever. And I also... The number of offenses, I mean, it seems okay. But the one thing that really toasted my... Or made me a little bit upset was the deletion in D. And it was in there for a reason. There are some places, other than stereos, where there are noise problems in town. And this was the... As I told Alahu in a note I sent to him earlier, it's the only progressive part of the whole thing. Instead of "thou shalt not, thou shalt not," if you have a really noisy compressor on your air conditioner in East, we would have at least theoretically the capability of saying, "Put a baffle around it." You know, and so they're saying... Alahu says, "Well, they're afraid you're going to make them build something in their front yard, but we have a zoning code that would prevent that from happening." You know, so it's mainly business uses. It also applies to bars that project noise into the neighborhood. And that's a problem. And the third ward, not only will the time be a problem... And they were asking me to prod Sherry to get her thing going, and this thing's meanwhile going through. And we're just kind of going, "Oh, my goodness." But they... Why not? Why not give another way to say, instead of all these fourth-degree misdemeanors, why not say, "Baffle the noise"?
I can address that. When we only talked about that for about thirty seconds, to be quite honest.
And nobody knew its origin?
Well, not only that, but I'd never seen it done. And I didn't know how we would use a noise baffle to quiet a stereo.
Well, it's not a stereo.
So, we... I honestly thought that it was old language, and I simply shrugged. And so, well, maybe that doesn't need to be in there. So, if there is a legitimate origin...
Well, I don't know if it's not going to be enforced.
I don't think anybody would be opposed to putting that back in. I'm speaking for myself. I'm not opposed to putting it back in.
Well, we're not going to ask stereos. And, you know, the other thing that I think my people... Soon not to be my people, but I think one thing that they really want is a prohibition on amplified sound or, you know, live bands with amplified sound.
Live bands.
Absolutely. And, you know, so foot pro po might be that ordinance separate coming out. No amplified sound in the R1, R2, and R3 zones.
When you say amplified sound, do you specifically talk about live bands?
I don't know what I'm talking about. I'm that...
A stereo is considered amplified sound.
No, I don't know.
Well, it could be. I think you're talking about a live performance.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
I was just at a West Side Neighborhood Association meeting. We talked about it there. There was a draft ordinance there that was sent around, and it seemed to have merit. I mean, there are certainly some issues that you get with a live band as far as sound pressure levels and volumes that you don't get with a loud stereo that's in or out, on the porch or inside a house. And we're soon to experience an increase in the numbers of live bands with these fests that are coming up, and it has a significant impact. It's quite possible that the eight-fest amplification system that will be about a half a mile outside the city limits will be heard throughout the city because of the funnel. I'm hoping that's not the case, but it's quite possible that would happen. So, you're right. Live bands present certain problems that stereos and televisions and Xboxes do not. So...
And that may be a companion piece. At least, I'd like it. But I think we still have to get the input from the people who live there and also the time. I think, you know, maybe what you say makes a lot of sense. I'm passing on to Sherry or whoever you want to.
Hi. As you know, that there was an ad hoc committee who spent a lot of time for several months working on this. And one of the things that we talked about was the live bands. As a matter of fact, that's what we started talking about in the beginning, was stages and live bands. And that was one of the problems that we had. What is amplified sound? And is, you know, there was a lot of discussion about stereos and that sort of thing. And I don't personally have a problem with the changes in the penalty section. However, I do have a problem with the time change. And I hear what you're saying about there aren't many violations between ten and twelve. But the most of the people, not all the people, but most of the people who worked on that ad hoc committee, I would be appalled at the time change.
Can I address that just briefly? The... I think there is a common misconception for people in the community that the noise ordinance is only effective at the time limit that's listed in the per se section of the ordinance. Truly, the noise ordinance is in effect twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Prior to September, even though the law allowed it for twenty years, I think this was first passed in ninety-three, ninety-two, somewhere around there, even though the law had that per se timeframe in there, the police department, until September of last year, did not take action on noise without complaint. So, what we had in law, the ability to... People, I think, have this misconception that the noise ordinance doesn't start until ten on the weeknights and midnight on the weekends. And that's completely wrong. The noise ordinance, when somebody complains at three o'clock in the afternoon, we can respond. Depends on how the court viewed it, is reasonable. What, you know... And enforcement of the noise ordinance is a little nebulous, except for that per se section. And that's what we kind of latched on to in September. If we change the ordinance as proposed to midnight all days of the week, what we're simply saying there is, is not that people cannot complain. And I don't mean to say that there aren't violations between ten and midnight. There are. There are violations at three in the afternoon, midnight, seven, you know, all the hours. But what we simply are doing is shifting back to that pre-September enforcement strategy where between ten and midnight, we won't take action without a complaint. So, that ten hours that we would be adding, there's... We'd be essentially adding ten hours to the time that people in the community would have to phone in a complaint to the police department before action could be taken. After midnight, we still have the ability to enforce without complaint. So, that's specifically what that change means. It doesn't mean at all that noise is granted or accepted up until midnight. It simply means the police cannot enforce it without complaint between ten and midnight on all days. Okay? So, yeah. So, that's...
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
And I appreciate the stepped-up enforcement. I'm glad that it has resulted in voluntary compliance and that sort of thing. But I still think it's going to be a major problem, changing it from ten to twelve.
I just would couple that, too. I'm glad for your clarification, Chief Pyle. I was under the same impression, oh, it's... You know, that we can't... You're changing it from ten o'clock weekdays to midnight, and that's... That complaints can occur otherwise. But I think maybe it's going to call for a lot of education, because I think there's likewise the perception that you can make noise. It's your right to make noise until ten o'clock or midnight. So, if you're changing weeknight hours, then I think there will be that, you know, more widespread perception, "Oh, we can make noise. We have every right to between... Up until midnight."
Yeah. And that's the way it was prior to September, to be quite honest. There was this perception that even though the law allowed for us to enforce, we did not. And people... That's why we had stereos playing, whether they were complained about or not, at three in the morning. And if a person was lucky, there was no complaint. We didn't bother them. If they weren't lucky, we phoned a complaint, we dealt with it. Now, since September, and it's most remarkable on the weekends, when you drive down a street at eleven fifty-eight, eleven fifty-five, you'll hear stereos at several houses, any particular street. At twelve oh one, you just hear crowd noise.
Yeah. And... Never mind. But that's the same thing that we're just talking about. The perception is that noise can be made until ten. So, if you move it to midnight on weeknights, then the assumption will be that stereos can be played loudly until eleven fifty-nine.
That is possible.
And the kids are supposed to go to bed at nine. Ten was a compromise when we did the original origin. Ordinance nine was, or earlier, was requested, because children need to go to bed at an earlier time. People who have worked all day and need to get up at five-thirty or six the next morning are thinking about going to bed at nine, or nine-thirty, or ten. So, that exact same perception is going to get in the way... When we saw this, city council saw this for the first time tonight, almost a hundred percent was hung up on the time change. So, we also need some education. We need to be educated on that.
Well, what you're speaking specifically to is it could possibly... Can't happen. Absolutely. There could be perception, just as you described, that, well, that means we get to make noise until midnight. That's not entirely true, because people can complain, and we would address it. And because there's an administrative violation occurring for the first two violations and this built-in warning system, there's more of a likelihood now that our officers would take... Would issue an administrative citation at those hours. Prior to that, under the current law, there are some reasonable misconsiderations that have to be made, judged against current court rulings, the hour of the day, that kind of thing. So, that because this is an administrative violation, there's not an automatic gateway right into the court system to contest on those concerns. So, yeah, you're absolutely right. That could happen. My role in this is not... Is simply to say that this proposal does not change drastically the way our department is currently enforcing the ordinance. That's my role in this.
Does that...
Yes. Don't you think Representative Fall is coming to... I can go first. Are you going to go first? Ladies first?
After you. After you. This is kind of following up from what we're discussing right now, is right now, during fest season, students think that they have a free rein of making noise all day. And I just... I want to point out to many people that the community and the neighbors and the neighborhoods are fairly good-natured during fest season about calling in complaints and such. Last... Over Easter, it was nice and pleasant, and you could eat outside. But, I mean, I live in the Near East area, and we had a friend come in from out of town on that Saturday, and we tried to sit out in the backyard when High Fest was going on. And there was this amazingly loud roar just going on. And this was, you know, six o'clock in the evening. So, basically, during the spring, early spring, students, these parties, these fests, which are not sanctioned by the city, are being tolerated. And this dull, massive noise that sounds like the tribe about to, you know, break out or something with live bands, huge massive stereos, and just massive amount... Is being tolerated by the neighbors. And it's not like, you know, if I bet you had... It would be very difficult, too, because, you know, I'd like to see them be, you know, not start at ten o'clock or nine o'clock in the morning when they do Palmer Fest, because then it goes for almost, you know, eighteen or twenty hours. And after a bit, you know, neighbors start... And it... Spring is great. It's our first time to be outside, except for all these weekends. And I think that students need to realize that many, many neighborhoods are being very tolerant about this. And so, I think that changing administrative violations and criminal violations and stuff is listening to what students are requesting and such. But it's a two-way street with communication.
Absolutely. I agree a hundred percent.
Thank you. Again, Chief, thank you for being here. It was nice to see you at the Neighborhood Association meeting. I appreciate you taking time. I remember Gosney was there as well, and I know that you helped answer some of our questions and address the concerns of the West Side, which were some of these very comments that Representative Fall alluded to. I did some research on this issue and other issues, and that... Which led me to a conversation with a co-director, who was a former police lieutenant in the city of Burlington, Vermont. It was really interesting, because the information that he shared with me was that they don't have this issue in Burlington, Vermont, which is a college town in a very nice community, nice city, with very forward-thinking things happening, open streets, lots of bars, very similar to Athens, except it's a little bigger town with a smaller university. And what he told me, what he informed me, was that their fines are significant. And I know that this isn't necessarily your legislation that we're looking at per se here. But in all honesty, I think these fines are a joke. Looking at the legislation that they have in... in Vermont and Burlington, first violation, each resident and other offenders receive a minimum of $300 plus three hours in a restorative justice program for an uncontested ticket. Second violation, within 24 months, each resident and other offender receives a minimum of $400 plus three hours in a restorative justice program. And then.
Everybody at the party could be, could be.
Third, third and subsequent offense are criminal proceedings and carry a $500 fine. So, again, he said they don't have, they don't have an issue with parties and noise in their community. I'm all for having a good time, but I don't know if 10 kegs and huge bands blaring tons of music that affect the quality of life for a number of people is, is the way we want to go as a community. So I think, again, this issue is challenging, because as the chief elaborated in great length at our neighborhood meeting, and then when Member, Member Nysley, myself, the City Service Safety Director, and the planner met with the university officials, we talked about the history of these fests and what's happened. And they used to be sanctioned events that were on campus. Spring Fest was the culmination, and it was down at the Intermural Field. There used to be weekends, so South Green had a gathering, West Green, East Green, they would have these gatherings with beer trucks and bands, and they're all on campus. So we've now seen this move to our communities and our neighborhoods, and it's, it puts a toll on us financially and as a safety issue. It's very challenging to deal with all these issues. So I think we need to continue to have this dialogue with the university to look for solutions. Have a dialogue with the state as well for their involvement. But again, in this legislation, I think the fines are a joke, and it's no more than a slap on the wrist, in my opinion.
That was my question, too, is whether or not the fines could be more. Can they be? Is it administrative fine? And what I liken it to is when you drive into a town and on the edge of town, you see a $500 fine for littering, you know? Could we, in fact, do the same?
Probably we'd have to bounce that off the law director. Somewhere along the line, I think, with, there's a certain threshold where it has to go through court. You're talking about a ticket. I think there's this threshold on that, but I'm not sure. And again, if you're, if you start talking about $300, $400 fines, not that they would, it would make things quiet, but again, uncontested was the first word you said there. You could see where, you know, if it's going to cost you 300, maybe you do want to contest it on the second floor here. We could have a line out the door in terms of how many people want to contest it. And again, this is, let me point out, this is Title 13 here. This is all yours. Planning Commission doesn't do it. Council's legislative. Really, the action we have is trying to have, again, have a dialogue with community members, both students and non-students.
Correct.
You could go back and look at the table ordinance you had from last year. Review that. You could pull it off the table and start to run with it if you choose. You could look at this one, see how you want to tweak it. The battle thing, I understand what's going on there, because there have been cases where people called up and said, this heat pump, this air conditioner is too loud. We need shielding around it. I wasn't, I wasn't in on these discussions, but that, I've known two cases where people have come to us and said, this is a problem. This is a noise problem. It's going 24 hours a day. It's right next door. That could be changed, and any of this can be changed. Really, the whole point we have in is how to make it so it works for the administration, works for all the citizens, both long-term or short-term.
Sure. But if I may, our mayor, you know, Member Bain has addressed this before, and so has our chief, and that is that a number of the complaints are coming from students. It's students who are here for an education, that are serious about their studies.
Yes.
That want to have a good time as well, but they're, they're not willing to accept this insane noise.
Good thing we don't get sides for amplified systems here. No, I understand what you're saying. And there's always the threshold, the problem with actually reporting one of your peers. There's always a reluctance to do that in some cases, too, even for anybody. I mean, who wants to report on their neighbor? You know, they'd much rather talk, but they, if they don't want to talk in the middle of the night, they don't know.
Sure. And I've done that. I've walked down the street at midnight and had conversations with people that were out on the front porch playing banjo at midnight. I've walked around the neighborhood looking for bongos. I want to have a dialogue as well. But if I'm, if I can't find it, if I can't have a discussion because the person is intoxicated, and I'm not going to walk up to a party or a band with 500 people and 10 kegs and.
No. The best alternative is to call.
Right.
Right. Again, this is just, the reason why this is postponed is because we're at a point where this is a dialogue, this is discussion with the Student Senate.
Sure.
Alahu is part of the council, and I figured that it's time to spread out between everybody else and see what goes. You can go back to your constituents, see what they think. You have drafts of it right now. I don't plan to, I don't think this should be charged into, if that's what you're asking for the next, in the next, you know, week or something like that. But again, this is, this is where we are right now. We can keep moving it along. We can get you guys to move it along. You could say, no, this is not where we want to go. We're aware of the initiative. That's still probably in play. I don't think personally that would do any, much in terms of changing how we operate. I think probably if anything, it just probably hurts the community feeling, just because it pit two fractions against each other. But again, it's all, it's all up to, you know, this is a proposal. Some work that's been done as long, as well as a task force, which is why I mentioned. Go look at the work that you did last year. Meld it together. Have another conversation with it.
I was wondering if perhaps Debbie could send a copy of our ordinance that's now tabled to all the council members, just to refresh, so we can refresh ourselves and maybe compare the two. And perhaps we could pick out things from that one and mail them together.
It should actually still be on the website someplace.
It's still on the website.
But we can, okay, we can check on that.
Thank you.
So if I could just comment briefly on why I see the need for finding common ground on this. I think that the change in enforcement policy, we can all attest, has resulted in remarkable success in the way that the city handles noise and the reduction in the noise level in certain neighborhoods later at night. In my opinion, I know the mayor disagrees with me, but I think that the initiative would do two things that would really hamper the police department's ability to enforce this. And perhaps the chief could comment if he would like after my comments here. But one would be that it would require a complaint 24 hours a day, no matter what. There would have to be a citizen complaint. And the second thing the initiative would do, would require a 30-day warning period between, before any violation. And so.
This is the student initiative?
This is the, the student initiative that would be on the ballot if they are successful in signatures and we don't reach common ground.
Right.
So in my opinion, that would completely negate the ability of the police departments, the ability of the police department to enforce the noise ordinance the way they do now. And that's where I see the great need to make sure that there can be effective enforcement. And finding something that won't significantly alter the spirit of the current noise ordinance, because I think that it's, it's been greatly effective in the police chief's hands here. And I guess just a little bit more, we do have some time to discuss this. I think as the city council, we're in a different situation than we were when we were discussing the previous proposal. And that's because there's this ballot initiative coming down the line. And many of us will remember the couch, couches on porches referendum that was, is that about a dozen years ago, maybe, that did pass. So I think there's a fair chance that the ballot initiative could pass. And so I think there is a substantial amount of benefit we could get from reaching common ground and coming to a compromise before the initiative goes forward.
Do you mind if I add just add one thing? I just want to add one more thing on the, and the student initiative that's written also, and this is why I sent a letter to the citizens of the city and to our community and to the media. That initiative would also require a warning even after the first complaint practice. Our police department could be required to warn the same house up to 11 times a year. In my letter, I used an analogy to speeding violations. And I didn't mean to compare speeding, the violation of speeding, to the violation of noise. They're apples and oranges. But if you could imagine what would happen in the state of Ohio if the state legislature passed a law that said you must receive a warning from a police officer for speed before you could be cited on the next violation, what would happen to the volume of speed in our state? So those two things, the required warning and that 30-day reset period specifically, I was concerned about. Also, I, it is our, as I said before, our threat of enforcement at the per se time limit, not necessarily our enforcement, but the ability to have that threat, is what keeps us from having to use the ordinance in an enforcement role in the first place. If we go to this, if this initiative were to pass and we were required to receive a complaint 24 hours a day, I think that is really going to put a strain on our community, not necessarily the department, but certainly on the community. Because the department handles about 900 noise complaints a year. And I don't know that they would go up or go down just based on that initiative, but certainly the impact it would have on the community would be unfortunate.
Would be like pre-September, right?
Would be, yes. It would be like pre-September.
When, before everything got.
Plus.
Pretty well enforced. That's what you're saying. As you see it, the initiative petition would go back even more, more than.
I think it would take us back and beyond back. But it's simply because of that required warning that resets every 30 days. So we give a warning to House A. 31 days later, somebody calls in a complaint again, we have to give another warning. And one of the things that I really don't like about it is the lack of fairness in that required warning. And I've used this analogy in our discussions with Student Senate before. We have some violations that somebody will call in at 10:05. Not a lot, but sometimes somebody will call in at 10:05 and say, this house next to me is playing a loud stereo. And we'll knock on the door, and it will be somebody housecleaning, running the vacuum, who had their stereo on, lost track of time, and said, oh, I didn't realize it was after 10:00. I'll turn that right down. We give them a warning. That's appropriate. So the impact of this initiative would not change that type of violation that much at all. We also have rolled up on calls at 4:00 AM where a group of young people would return to their house to an after, and create an after-hours party, put their stereo system on the front porch, crank it to 10, and pass out on the couch.
Or go next door.
And we take 20 minutes knocking on the door, trying to wake them up. Those folks need a citation, in my opinion. Most of our officers that responded to that call would agree. This is the type of violation that needs, that's egregious. But under that initiative, they would get the same warning that the person that was in violation at 10:05 would get. And I think that's completely unfair and harmful to the community. So.
We'll continue to discuss that and this. I also know that 100% of the council appreciates the time.
Yes.
And the new enforcement.
Yes.
Very much.
And also the students who have been involved. And we need to further our discussion among ourselves.
And not to volunteer the chief more than he has on his plate, but he's always willing to discuss it with any groups or anybody who wants to talk.
Because we're afraid.
Absolutely. So use that.
Much as we allow, I'm available to talk about it.
Thank you. I think Ilahko has one more thing, one more issue for us, our community issue.
I do. We've seen a number of resolutions regarding the state budget through this council and other items at the state level. I was contacted recently by the Ohio Consumers Council.
Oh, yeah.
Which is the residential advocate for utility customers in the state, an entity that has saved over $10 billion to residents in this state over the last 35 years. They're being faced with a proposed roughly 50% cut in their budget, which would severely impact their ability to serve the people of Ohio. And one of the amazing things about this in my mind is that they're not funded through the state's general fund. They have separate dedicated funding through utility bills. So it would not help balance the state budget in any way, shape, or form. It would simply remove one of the greatest advocates for utility customers in the state. And so I passed around an information sheet on what the Consumers Council does, and I have a draft resolution that would be in support of maintaining their funding. Unless there's opposition from council, I'd like to bring forward.
Well, thanks.
Okay.
Can I get one?
Okay.
She has another question?
No? Okay. Oh.
Not related to that.
Something else?
An update on the domestic partnership registry. I have looked it up from the law director and council had given me some ideas. And so I lived at Cleveland and Cleveland Heights. It's a really simple form. I think we'll really be able to do this within the mayor's office. We already have notaries that are available for your charge. So I just wanted to say I feel like that portion can move forward in terms of the, it's a simple declaration. It's something we can keep on file and.
As a simple declaration, it is really, it has no legal weight, this registry. It would be separate from our discussion about benefits being passed to.
It's important.
But it, yes.
Right. It would be separate, but I mean, these are just steps that we'd be taking. And I could send out, I can modify this and send it out to council for review, you know, so it can be wrapped in an ordinance.
Would you please, have I heard a comment?
Yeah. Thank you. That's, that's good to hear. I wanted to make a comment on the benefits aspect of the three ordinances that we were entertaining. In the proposed ordinance, it would establish guidelines very similar to what Ohio University uses and has used for several years for their benefits program for domestic partners in terms of having financial ties to each other and having cohabitation, living in the same property for a certain amount of time. And so it's, it's my opinion that with those in there, doing it in a similar way to the university, that it would not have a negative impact on the city's budget, because we would likely have a very limited number of people that would be partaking in that. Under, the university, for example, I think, has 10, perhaps, out of five?
Five.
Five people that take advantage of their program out of.
5,000.
5,000 employees. So it would be a very low number, if any, in the city that would, that would partake, in my opinion.
I think the law director's sort of doing it right now. This is the law director's office working.
I believe so, yeah.
Domestic partner, domestic partner, regardless of that. And then it was my understanding we were going to move forward with the hate crime legislation, too, and I don't know.
Yeah. And again, the law director's office is putting that language together. And from my last discussion with Lisa Eliasen in that office, she's very anxious to get it done.